I know, I said to my mom, like, I better eat a lot of dinner. What if Karen forgets the snacks?
I did too. We haven't had dinner yet, but, but, uh, Bill likes, uh, um, the Nature's Valley granola bars that are like the peanut butter and dark chocolate.
Oh, the, I like the Kind bars.
Oh.
Anyway, here's what we did that study. So I'm saying we don't have enough information. Like you said, we're in 21, we're tech to tech.
You put it up with each other, huh?
Okay, um, these are for the minutes.
Okay.
And right there, they say we clearly didn't, in 21, we had no capacity.
Yes.
So we had no capacity, and how can we add it? You know, votes change. But anyway, what maybe the new study will tell us if we add it, and I'm assuming you don't mind.
We have had it.
I mean, you haven't seen it.
I may have, whatever the, there, I'm sure there's a more recent one than 2021.
No, 2024.
2024, okay.
Yeah, that's this one.
Okay. Oh, right here, yes, okay.
Anyway, that's.
Because we did, we got the, um, wow, so John Martin just did this one for the.
Yeah.
And he came, he did a presentation where they wanted to go down Long Expressway or.
Yes.
That was all for.
I was here for that.
Yeah.
They give the different options and that was.
Yeah, and that was for the sewer.
Right, the sewer, that's, that's the big problem, the sewer.
The, for the sewer. Yes.
But I don't think we've seen his proposal or turned it is or whatever.
No, because we spent the, um, part of the, of the money that we voted. It was like, close to $400,000 for that study.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot of money. Yeah, it was a lot of money.
Like, it's right in here instead.
Right there, but.
Yeah.
I didn't see that before I said that.
Yeah, no, I.
But, but it was a lot of money. But he had three different, like, one was the expressway. He thought if we could get the right of way, that would be the, the better of them because we wouldn't have to move anything or pour under driveways. And the other one was to see about the railroad.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember hearing.
And that was, then they have to do the right of ways and, and all that stuff. But I, I don't think we have gotten his report back yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And then, I think they were going with Allen, maybe, yeah, it was all the time.
Yeah. Yep, there, I think there was three different proposals or, or options.
So there was.
And, um, he was gonna study them.
So I'd like to see that before we do this, because we've got this, you know, just to, so we know what we're up against, because that's a big hit for the citizens. Anyway, that's.
Every time I drive by.
Be beautiful.
It's gonna be.
I was in Forsarts and they, they were working, like, all the people were in there having lunch and they had it up on the big screen.
Did you hear Diana say that one day, their sisters are designing it? Yeah, and she didn't even know it was going.
Yeah, that's what she mentioned.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I keep telling my mom and getting her, like, a master suite or get my mom a.
Do you know how much it was going?
I know.
When my dad, when my dad was up at the metal lodge, it was like $12,000.
It's, 'cause they just take your money sadly.
And it was so, because, you know, and, and my dad was real popular, like, like, um, he always had, he, he, my dad never went a day there without multiple visitors. And, and he had, like, his common area where, like, all the other residents would come because, you know, there's outsiders.
Right.
And stuff, but, but, um, one night they brought dinner and they brought, they brought me in here in the trays and they're all sitting there. My dad says, "Did we get our dinner first?" He says, "'Cause we're sitting here."
You were out that late?
Well, it's hot for tea and he was, he was nice.
She works alone.
He says, "If we could get it hot." And all the girls said, "Absolutely not."
Yeah, my building.
And she went and she.
She, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, she put this backwards? Well, no, she puts this on top.
The room upside? Yeah.
Huh?
I've made it.
Eh, she goes.
And it's always the.
This is, this is something that he was, trustee, because I'm giving him the history, but I know you know the history, like, the back area. So hopefully any new years.
Well, I can, 16 to 33.
Room.
Yeah, like, I, I've been.
Well, this one she got.
Right.
Yeah, that is, I've been, I have another.
Oh, yeah.
They usually get, they usually get. I try to get it wherever I.
What's it?
Upside.
Upside?
I heard about it on WBT, like, WRT.
Yeah, yeah.
But what else he did, one more thing.
National.
He didn't do the actual show. He does, he did.
I heard about it.
So what else can you do?
Yeah, they've got restaurants on there, like, appetizers on there, chef's shelves on there.
A wheelbarrow.
Yeah, they're together.
Yeah.
Chinchis on there, there's a lot of food and gaps.
Yeah.
Like, there's some hotels.
It's just that sometimes you think it's a wheelbarrow and it's.
Then, uh, yeah, I'll send you, I'll send you a link. If I send you a link, we'll save a little more because I prefer. Boom, it's weird.
And he looked it up and he was like, "I don't see whether to make.
Packed house tonight.
Not leaking so much, but like a rust buildup and it just pops it, like, because it's.
They got the memo, I guess.
I didn't realize.
Hey, that's an updated, I don't know if it's any different than what we already have. The attorney sent it over.
What?
The attorney sent over the resolution.
Oh.
Oh.
Um, again, so.
Okay.
I don't know if anything's changed, but. Oh, he wants to talk.
Nothing to do with this.
Not really.
No, okay.
Cause, um.
Attorney sent over a new one of these today, put the resolution.
Mine's, mine's beautiful.
We should go with that.
And it's so warm.
I don't.
Than what we already have.
How to depress.
How to depress.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are these people? What did you do?
I didn't do.
There was a lot of, uh.
Cause usually people come in and mad about something.
They couldn't be mad at me, I mean.
Push back at the planning commissioner. You know, Neil's telling us, we don't, we have a.
They couldn't possibly.
Yeah.
Members in the community are saying, well, we don't, so.
Well, the engineer's the one we talked to about that, to make sure we have capacity for that.
There's a lot of people out there.
It's probably something that's.
I said, "What'd you do, George?"
Right.
Well, yeah, I said, "What'd you do?"
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call of the officers, please.
Yuzakowski?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Rubel?
Bowen?
Here.
Deland?
Here.
Locers?
Here.
Riley?
All right, so, uh, we need to, uh, have a motion to open the public hearings.
A motion to open up the floor for public hearing.
And I'll support it.
All right, we have motion by trustee Locer, support by trustee Deland. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. All right, so we've got, uh, two hearings tonight. The first one is on a grant application uh, with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund. Um, I'm gonna just bring this up here if I can. I'm gonna try this here and see if, see if it works.
I know. I wouldn't look at that here. I can't read that one.
All right, so the map that you see on the right, um, the, um, line just to the left of the yellow boxes is Wadham's Road. Um, the one that's kind of on top of the yellow boxes is North River Road. Um, the, uh, item that you see in the middle, in between the two boxes, is the Black River. Um, so, uh, what we're applying for is a, uh, trust fund grant, uh, to purchase that property, um, along the Black River. We've done a lot of community outreach and surveying and different things, and one of the top requested items that we've seen within the community.
Speak up, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Um, so wait for you to adjust the volume?
I can only go up so far, but I can try. Am I closer, babe?
Uh, it's, it's a little hard, but I try for sure. Now we're getting feedback. Um, so we, uh, one of the top requested items in that feedback that we've gotten from the community is, uh, accessibility to kayaking and canoeing. Uh, this would give us that. Um, County Parks has already agreed to, uh, give us a kayak and canoe launch. Um, so we're excited about that. It's one that they formerly had at Woodsong Park, but it, for whatever reason, didn't work at Woodsong Park. Uh, so they're gonna, uh, donate it to this project. Um, the, the grant that we're applying for is strictly for property, uh, property purchase because we can't do any development without owning the property. So that's our first step, is to, to own the property. Uh, the Decker family did have that property for sale. Uh, we talked to the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. Community Foundation purchased the property, and they're gonna hold it until we get, uh, the funding for, for this. Um, the grants take about a year and a half. Um, so we have to apply by April 1st. Uh, we've got the application completed already. Uh, I'm meeting with Kim Harmer from City Report here on tomorrow. She's got, she's reviewed it and has given some recommendations on some, some, some things to kind of tweak it, make it a little bit better. We would not hear until probably sometime around November, whether we got the grant or not. And then it, it depends on funding from legislature. So that would not happen until March or April, and then we would probably get the money around May. So a year and a half is the entire cycle for that grant program. So that's what, that's what's going on there. Um, we certainly will open it up to questions on that or comments, if anyone would like to. Yeah.
Dennis McCallum, 702 Allen Road, kid, right here in Kimball. How much is the property currently listed for?
Uh, $320,000.
And how much is the grant being applied for?
Uh, that would be $160,000.
Okay, so the difference would come from?
A couple different sources. So the Community Foundation has said they will support, uh, some of the, now, we don't have to have any, so we don't have to have any match at all. Uh, we just score better if we have match. Um, so the Community Foundation is, is going to commit something. I don't know exactly what that is yet. And we've also applied for a grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. Um, and then we've also committed, we had, uh, monies available from our ARPA funds. Um, and we're gonna use those. So no general fund monies at all.
So you still have some of the COVID money left?
Uh, cor, well, not now. I mean, we've used, we've allocated it all.
Cause I believe you had, what, a million, just shy of a million dollars?
Correct.
Last I heard, about 300K went to Sparling Road?
Yeah, about, uh, 250 to Sparling, yeah.
Is there a parks committee that's gonna work on, uh, the prices for the development? And where would that money come from?
There would be a committee that will work on that. Um, I've got, uh, a lot of people that are interested in helping on that, um, already. Um, again, we would, and this is kind of the cycle that usually happens, is you, you, you apply for grants to get the development as well.
And where would the money come for? If there's, so, you, cause once you secure a property, you're still gonna have the hurt of getting the funds to develop it into a park, correct?
That's correct.
Now, how's the insurance work on something like that? For liability insurance, is that gonna be a major expense, being on the water?
Be no different than what we already have. I mean, we already have a water, I don't wanna say water park, uh, a park, water in the park, let's put it that way.
Just give me a minute, I'm trying to, it's like, my handwriting here. So it shouldn't cost the taxpayers any extra additional. I, if I remember correctly, Kimball Township had, what, about 30, $35,000 in the parks budget to operate?
Right, correct. Yeah, it's actually about 45 to 50.
Okay, so some of that obviously is gonna have to be allocated that direction versus the two parks we're already maintaining?
Some, yeah, mhm.
And where would that money come from?
That would come from that budget.
Okay, appreciate your time, thank you.
Nathan Dayber, 4855 Wellington Avenue. Um, you talk about this park, um, what happens if we don't get the grant? What happens to the land?
Uh, we would have to, we would have to try to find another source or sell the property.
So you purchased the land at $320,000, which is overpriced for that piece of land?
Incorrect, that is exactly, we cannot, we cannot buy that, we cannot pay more than its value for that property.
Who was it appraised by?
Uh, was appraised by a, uh, real estate agent, for one.
The agent or?
Community Foundation also went through a process to make sure it was worth the money that they were going to spend.
So 320,000?
So either they're, I think they would do their due diligence as well to ensure that that property is, uh, well worth that amount. It's 37 acres total.
Yeah, 37 acres, I, I understand, 37 acres. I own a little over a thousand acres here within the state of Michigan. Um, but yeah, 37, 37 acres, over half of that 37 acres is useless land, which is unbuildable, unsuitable, can't do nothing with.
Okay.
So where do we justify the $320,000 purchase price on land that is not usable?
Have you evaluated, are you an appraiser? Are you, what is your background that you can assess what the value of that property is?
I buy probably about 100 properties a, a year and I sell 100 properties a year. And that property was something that came across my table by my investors, and it's not worth any, anything besides that flat land.
Sure.
So you, $320,000 purchase price, how much is it going to cost for the build out, to put?
That we don't know yet. We haven't, we haven't even, we haven't looked at build out yet because why would you look at build out and spend money on build out when you don't have the property? You wouldn't do that.
Well, you have the property, cause you say that we're gonna have to find somebody else to purchase it if we don't get the grant.
Right, I don't own the property. I can't do anything with it right now.
So if we don't get the grant, that, that property, does that property stay with this Community Foundation?
No, we would, we would have to find a, another buyer for it.
So that we actually own the land right now until we pay it back? Community Foundation is our bank right now on that property.
In a sense, sure.
You would never sell that property for $320,000 later.
Okay.
And building out a, a type of property, um, you know your, your fundings before you purchase it. So we have no clue, uh, how much is it'll cost to put ADA ramp in there? We have no clue how much it'll cost to put stairs in there, parking lot in there, unless we just leave it gravel or grass. We have not, have no clue, and we're hoping to get a $160,000 grant.
Correct.
I would like to see this township figure out where the, where the monies will come from to cover everything, cause to build out ADA ramp and all that, you're looking at probably about another $250,000.
Yeah, I mean, by the time you put in a parking lot and other things, you could be looking at in excess of $500,000.
So where's that money coming from with the $160,000 grant? Where's the ex, the extra money to finish the build out coming from?
Again, you, I mean, we're, we're still looking at three years out for a build out, right? So you're gonna look for grants. We would, we would apply for another, uh, trust fund grant for the authority then.
That's what I'm looking for. I want, you know, so not, so none of the build outs will increase taxes to the residents?
That's the goal.
Okay.
We can't raise taxes, by the way, just saying.
Thank you.
If anyone's wondering, this board does not have the power to raise taxes. So, anyone can say that, but we don't have the power to do that. The only person that has the ability to increase your taxes is you. You could vote on an increase in taxes. This board has no power to do that. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, um, you said that they donated us the, um, kayak, um, launch.
Correct, yeah.
So is that already the ADA?
It is, yeah, mhm.
And, um, what, what's the upkeep on that? Like, they have to be taken out of the water every year?
They do, they have to be taken out.
And we have the ability to do that? I mean, we gotta, like, make a ramp type thing in there and then you just pull out because that water gets quite high in the spring and stuff. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Robert Felix. I'm the St. Clair County Commissioner for this district, fifth district, which includes Kimball Township. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Uh, I wanna speak first as commissioner, then I'll speak as a private citizen. As commissioner, I've seen parks come into our community throughout this county. They're an asset. When, sometimes when they start, you don't know quite how that project's gonna be. Sometimes you don't even know the cost, which seems kind of arbitrary and gives people issues. But there are funds available other than taxpayers' funds. As you see, the community foundations coming forward. There is millage of four parks in this community, which is a taxpayer fund. But a park is something that's going to be here for a long time. And when you have a vision to do something like this and put in a park along a river, uh, it's something you don't want to pass up unnecessarily. I can tell you, as your commissioner for this district, I will work with Supervisor Yuzakowski in this township to see what funds are available and make this happen. And as a private citizen, I'll tell you why. Uh, I've kayaked that stretch of river for several decades now, did it with our kids when they were little. That area near the Wadham's Bridge is kind of special because just to the west of Wadham's Road, there's an old wooden dam there. And you can get across that dam certain times of year when the water's not rushing, and you can go quite a ways up through the state game forest, which is beautiful. You can do it by canoe, you can do it by kayak. If you don't kayak or canoe, people that are in this area or your relatives or kids that come to visit, it's something you want to do. Uh, there's no other spot along that river that'll allow you to do that. The ramp that Supervisor Yuzakowski is referring to, an ADA roll-off kayak ramp, that was slated for Woodsong Park. I can tell you the problem with Woodsong Park. To get down to the ramp, you've got to go down a saw path back and forth. Very few people had the stamina to do that, much less get back up the river. So that gift from the parks to have that ramp available, those aren't inexpensive. They can be pulled out with any standard tractor or four-wheel drive pickup, so that would not be an issue. But yes, it would have to come out of that river in the winter or it wouldn't be there in the spring. So as a private citizen, um, I'm very much interested in that park. Uh, there's also quite a bit of fishing can be done right there. And having that particular stretch available would allow people to kayak that river from Croswell down to here in Wadham's or from Wadham's down farther to North River Road, there's a park, or even down to the Port Huron area itself. Uh, Port Huron in St. Clair County, we've missed out on tourism for years. And for those that are interested in having things to do and to bring income into the area, tourism compared to other areas of the state is something that has been lax here, and it's something I'm looking at because we have so much to offer in this area that hasn't been tapped into. So is it worth the amount of money they're asking? I guess it depends on what you're gonna do with it. If you wanted to build a home there, no, it might not be worth it. If you wanted to put a park along a river, uh, the Black River, there's not a lot of choices. So I'm very much in favor of, uh, this, and as county commissioner, I'll work to do what I can to assist. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I know there was a reason I voted for him.
Other, other comments?
I, uh, put some monetary figures out here to what few of the residents of Kimball Township supplied for the parks in St. Clair County. For the year 2024, $168,480.60 are supplied by the taxpayers of this township for all the parks in the county. So ours don't cost us that much to operate, the one we got now. So that's, you're paying for parks everywhere in the county. So whether it goes to that area eventually, that, that's how much you're paying every year in taxes.
All right. Any other public comment on that?
Any public comment on the budget? Yeah, I'll, uh, I'm gonna switch myself off there. We'll go back to the.
Maybe list what they were commenting on.
It's okay.
So, Chad?
Oh, I'll hold up that, just in case.
Eric?
I know what is, what I hear.
Eric, you gonna comment?
Uh, on, on this?
Yes, or on the budget?
Uh.
Oh, wait, is that what you were asking? Budget?
No, I mean, we can, we got public comment coming up. I mean, if people don't wanna comment on either of those, so.
Any more public comment?
Uh, we'll leave, we'll leave the, uh, hearing open, so if you do have, uh, comments or, uh, thoughts, uh, we'll allow you to share them. Uh, we won't close that hearing just yet, so. Um, for the, you have the agenda, so we need a, an approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Uh, I'm gonna make one change, sorry. Chief Grants is not here, so we're gonna strike that off of there for, for that. And he'll bring those to the next one, so we had something come up tonight. Um, so all right, we have motion to approve as amended there.
As amended, yes.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to, uh, the minutes from the, um, February 18th meeting. All right, any changes, corrections, additions to that? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve as printed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, February, what was that?
February 18th.
Yeah, February 18th, and file.
All right, we have.
Right there, I missed it.
Yeah. We have motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support for that?
I'll support that.
Support by trustee Deland. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. See, this one's a little confusing, maybe, where they set it up, but, 91,000? Questions on any of the disbursements? All right, do we have a motion to, uh, pay the bills, file reports?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $193,897.86. File and file payments.
All right, motion by Treasurer Jackson. Do we have support for that?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Yuzakowski?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Locers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to boards and commissions. We have two of them tonight. We have the, uh, road commission meeting minutes from February 4th and planning commission meeting minutes from January 28th. Questions or comments on any of those? All right, do we have a motion to receive and file?
I'll make the motion that we receive and file the minutes from the road commission.
I'll support that.
All right, motion by trustee Deland, support by trustee Locers. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to public comment.
Chad?
Yes, I, I did give out. Having out for an hour. Pat Kilburn, 405 Scott Road. And I was here because I was interested in the kayak launching, which are hard to come by in some areas. And everyone that I've talked to at my grandkids' age level, they're excited for it. So I commend the board for stepping forward and expand our parks.
Thank you.
And I know you, I, I've also heard that there are things that still need to be done or repaired in the other two parks, but I know you've got that handled, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, other public comment?
Sorry. Uh, Eric Sobel, 322 Eileen Avenue. Um, uh, first thing I wanted to ask about was, um, I, the, uh, master plan. I saw that posted on the website. Looks like a lot of good information in there, so I appreciate that. But, uh, I know we're in this, uh, public review period, uh.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think there's like a, a follow-up meeting that comes with that, but.
There is, yeah, there'll be a public hearing after the conclusion of the, uh, 63 days, and we'll have a public hearing.
Okay. In the meantime, the public can kind of.
They can comment anytime.
Read and view that. So I saw, like you mentioned, I saw it on the website, but I don't know if that's readily available for everybody to know that it's out there. Is it being, uh, published on the Facebook page or, uh, newsletter or anything like that?
I know it was, I, I don't know if it's been on Facebook yet, but it will be soon, yeah.
Okay, just a suggestion to get it out in front of, uh, as many people as possible. I think more input, better input. Um, uh, other than that, the only other thing I wanted to mention was more of a personal thing for myself. Of course, I'm wearing a shirt here. It's, uh, March is colorectal cancer awareness month, uh, so just wanted to get that word out there. It's, uh, third leading cause of cancer deaths in, in, uh, men and women combined. It is, um, also increasing, uh, in the number of younger people under the age of 50. Uh, they're projected by the 2030 to be the leading cause of cancer deaths in people under 50, so, uh. So, uh, this group fight colorectal cancer and colorectal cancer awareness or alliance. I've, a couple of groups I've worked with in the past, just to try and get the, get the word out and help raise awareness and raise funds. They, they spend a lot of time and money going into research and advocacy. And they are trying to get more awareness out there, particularly for young people. If you're under the age of, well, if you're forty-five or older, it's recommended that you get screened. So if you're under than that, though, you can still get screened if you're experiencing symptoms. I would recommend doing that. I can tell you it saves lives. And to go along with that, I know there's a lot of stuff out in the public right now about the, the NIH funding and things like that. I, I, I know that these groups do a lot to, to advocate for funding for those groups, particularly for cancer research. And it's very important that, that, that continues. So if, if you or anybody else that you know is affected by cancer, I would recommend you contact our senators and representatives and make sure that they continue to provide funding for, for that kinda work.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Touching on that base there, I was adding my four-month inspection to this week, yesterday, today, I mean. And also, my wife is getting one of those sent to her house. So just keep up on it because you don't wanna get that stuff.
Absolutely. If it's caught early, it's curable, but you gotta, you gotta do check.
Doctor ensured me that I better make sure that she does what she has to. I've done it.
We did get two, uh, two mail-in comments via email. One from Len Shatler, one here. As a creator of the Yakabouts, never heard of the Yakabouts, but apparently they're a pretty popular group. A local kayaking group of over five hundred members in the greater Port Huron area. I highly endorse and encourage your plan for this launch site on the Black River devoted to canoeing and kayaking. As I'm sure you know, access to the river outside of Port Huron and Fort Grassroot is minimal. Consisting mostly of put-ins alongside bridges or across private property. This park and the access point would open a large portion of the navigable river to many enthusiasts in southeast Michigan area. It provide a safe, convenient, and legal route to wilder, wilder portions of the river. I don't think it's that wild. Been whitewater rafting, it's not that wild. I commend your foresight and interest in advancing our sport in the upper reaches of the river. And pledge our members' support, encouragement, and assistance in this project. Please feel free to contact me and my admins with any questions or concerns. Thank you and good luck. Nice thing about the Black River, and I, I think Mr. Phillips, you mentioned it, you can, you can paddle upstream. It's, it's not a, a big enough current that you can't do that, so. Then we also got one from Sherri Faust. Good morning, Rob. Congratulations on securing the new Black River Park property. The project has been a recreation vision for a long time. It will be nice to have a park and access at this location, which has been desperately needed. It's such a scenic stretch with the low-flying, low-lying floodplain rapids and meandering river. Please let me know if there's anything we can do to support the township with the acquisition process or property development. Two positive, positive emails, so. All right, moving on to new business.
Oh, oh, I thought that was for. Okay, sorry. There's Nathan and then Ray. Three women go next. You'll go next, okay.
You wanna go right now?
No, no.
All right. No, you're okay. I can, I can try. We got time, we got two hours then. Well, I find it funny that Ed Gratz ain't here today. I'm gonna put all you guys on notice right now. I am filing a FOIA on your own personal phone, since Ed does use his personal phone and contact you guys directly. He contacted a trustee today. Talked bad about me today to that trustee. Yusinkowski, you shake your head yes, because you know about it. That's defamation, and I'm bringing defamation lawsuit against him personally and professionally here out of Campbell Township. Ed's also calling other firefighters that I talk to and telling, telling, telling them to leave me alone, stay away from me. I have no clue who Ed thinks he is to control people and try to tell people that I talk to certain people. Ed needs to realize that he works for the citizens of this township, and that's it. I wanna bring up a couple of things, and Yusinkowski, here's the one that you were part of. And Mr. Jackson, I think you had a phone call, which, what I was told. Dave Murphy, firefighter in Campbell Township, on his own personal time. Hearsay, a month later, some hearsay came up from a McDonald's, and you guys suspended him without pay. If you guys do something that somebody else doesn't like on your own personal time, eh, should you guys be suspended from your jobs here? No, nobody should be suspended from their job. I rec, I am asking this board to backpay Dave Murphy for something that he did not do. And for him being suspended on his own personal time.
Okay, so just first of all, we're not gonna discuss someone else's discipline with you?
I'm, I'm speaking for him.
No, no, mister.
Allowed to. I got my time up here, Mr. Yusinkowski, I, you sit there.
I will give you your time. I'll give you your time.
You could talk after my time.
Okay, uh, this is my meeting.
This, this is public comment, so this is.
I'm just telling you that we are not.
Interrupt a, a person.
I can talk during this. We have, we do not, we do not do it like other municipalities, right? Where there's a three-minute cutoff, we'll have dialogue.
Well, let's, let's have that.
I don't, I don't wanna.
Let's have that.
What I'm, what I'm saying to you is that we do not discuss someone's personal discipline in a public meeting with somebody other than, or, or with anybody other than that individual. And if you can, you can say.
You suspended him on his own personal time, Yusinkowski.
You don't know, you don't know what happened?
Oh, I know exactly what happened from day one, because I was with him until up till today, when, when Ed called him and threatened him his job. Because I FOIA some of the stuff from the fire department. You think these firefighters are not afraid to talk to me? They all talk to me. What about that sexual harassment that Ed was looking to from last year? When a firefighter had a heart attack on scene, sorry ladies. But the captain, lieutenant, and all the sergeants brought up sexual toys to the hospital. While he had a heart attack. Did any of those firefighters get suspended? Any of them get talked? Any, any of those firefighters get disciplined? No, you know all about it, Yusinkowski.
I think you're, you're making a lot of assumptions.
I'm not making assumptions.
You are making a lot of assumptions.
I already got depositions on this stuff. I'm not making assumptions. So right now, I will FOIA your phone, because you use your personal phone. And the nice thing about being a public servant, using your personal phone for anything opens it up for all of it. Pictures and all that.
Sure.
So I'm, so Peter, I'm gonna FOIA your phone, George's phone, Megan's phones, uh, Ms. Delane, and Gary. I'm gonna FOIA all your guys' phones. Do not delete text messages or phone calls between you and Ed. If they are, we will get them from the phone company, and we will prove that it's been authored after you were put on notice.
We don't, so just, just me personally? I don't delete any of those. They're all FOIable. So for me, I don't delete any of them.
Well, I'm just saying.
Emails, I don't delete texts.
I'm just saying, from this day forward, we find that they were deleted after you guys were put on notice.
As a matter of policy, because I'm using my phone and it's for township business, I don't delete any of them.
Well, I'm glad you don't. But what are we go, what are we going to do about this, this department, this fire department? Why is Ed calling trustees, telling them to stay away from a citizen that the trustees are here for the citizens of this township?
I'm not gonna, if you wanna put that in writing, I'll investigate anything you want, so.
Internal investigation, which, which, which you and Ed are together. Yusinkowski, I've already dealt with this. I have, I could go back to when I was a firefighter. I have everything still on, on recording. Between, between me and you, me and Ed, we, I still have it.
Okay.
Why did I get fired? Because I went and rat people out from the fire department.
No, that's not true.
I have the recording.
That's not true.
I have the recording.
Okay.
You, you want me to go run back home, come back real quick, grab the recording and show you?
No, we're not gonna do it here in this meeting.
I'll bring it up the next meeting, then.
That's fine. You can do whatever you wanna do. It's public, it's public comment. You can say whatever you wanna say.
No, it's the truth. I, so when, so when I show that recording to the public about what you're saying is not true, are you willing to step down and resign?
No, I'm telling you that the reason you were dismissed had nothing to do with you.
It's on the recording, Yusinkowski. Are you willing to step down and resign?
There were a lot of other things revolving around that. If you want me to discuss them, we can, we can pull the file and we'll start to discuss them.
Pull the file.
But I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I'd have to, have to pull it in another time, so.
I've asked for my file multiple times.
Okay.
Pull it. Cause there's nothing in it.
No, there is. There are, there are things in there.
Well, that means I would have to sign them, if there was any.
You don't have to sign anything. You could refuse to sign it.
Then you get fired, it's in the SOPs.
Okay.
So I, I already know all that stuff.
Okay.
So what are we gonna do about Ed Gratz?
Well, like I said, I just told you, if you wanna submit something in writing to me.
Who's gonna do the investigation? I want somebody outside of this, outside of this board to do the investigation.
Why would we have someone outside the board do the investigation?
Cause I know how you and Becky Ruble are with Ed Gratz, buddy. I'm not dumb. Everybody knows about it.
Okay.
Why don't we have a fire board anymore?
Cause we didn't have enough members.
Well, how many people, how many people need to be on the fire board? Cause I know at least ten of us wants to get on the fire board.
Really?
I filled out an application before.
Why have you not filled out the application that's required for that?
I gave in an application to Becky Ruble multiple times. I grabbed another one today from Neil Erickson. So I have filled them out. Cause they go to Becky, right? Ms. Ruble?
Yeah, they go to the clerk's office, correct.
So I've, I've given her applications. Cause I, I came in today and I asked Michelle, I said, are Becky not in? Cause I was gonna ask her all about it.
So there's one.
What?
How, I mean, there's no limit on how many members is there? I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it was established by.
I think there has to be three.
I'm not sure, but I know we haven't had enough to have.
And we've advertised for it multiple times and not received applications. In fact, it's still up and available now, where you could, on our website, select that. If you wanted to, but no one has, so.
And then, uh, the other thing on the website, why does it, is, why is it not updated? Why is it still showed twenty-one, twenty-two budget for this township?
I'd have to look at it and see.
That's the current budget. You go up, you go on the website, go to budgets, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
I'd have to see. We've changed, we've changed the way that works several times, so it may just be in the wrong, a wrong link or wrong something, but I can look at that.
All right, and then what are the hours required for work for the clerk to be within this township? Is there a set many, set number of hours that she's supposed to be?
No.
So she can come and go when she pleases?
Correct.
So why is there minute, minutes from twenty-twenty, when she decided to take over clerk, stating that she can work forty hours a week? If she gets a clerk position?
Okay.
So forty hours?
She's not required. No one's, none, none of the elected officials are required to work certain hours.
So she could just pass all the work down to deputy clerk, and she don't have to do nothing?
In theory. It's not what hap, that's not what's happening, that's for sure.
I'm just saying, it could. So, but no, like I said, moving forward, Ed needs to realize that the trustees work for the, for the people of this township. The firefighters work for the people of the township. He works for the firefighter, uh, for the people of the township. If he wants to start going around defaming me, pulling out my character, saying that I'm nothing but an issue, telling a trustee that I have more money than I can shake a stick at, right now, I'm gonna say, it's called F you money, cause I'm gonna keep my ass on this township and on him. And make sure you guys do everything to the book, moving forward.
Okay, I look forward to receiving your documentation.
On what? What documentation?
The documentation of the accusations you made that I asked for.
About?
About the chief, that you made some accusations, and you said you were going to provide document. You said you were going to provide document. You made several accusations. You said you were going to provide documentation. Do you not have documentation or?
What, that, you want the documentation right now about the sexual harassment? It's in an email.
I, I want all the documentation. Just have it to my office tomorrow.
It's in an email, I'll forward it to you right now.
Okay.
So yeah, I got that documentation about sexual harassment, and that firefighter left the department because of Ed.
Okay.
So who is, who, who is here to protect the firefighters from? Big bully Ed. He's a bully. We all know that.
Okay.
You go, you do things, you're his way or you leave. So who?
Okay.
So who's going to monitor him? Who's supposed to monitor him?
This board monitors him.
You're supposed to monitor him.
Correct.
You don't.
We do.
So when I prove all this accusation, are you willing to step down because?
Well, so far, you're telling me you don't have any. I asked you to send it to me, and you're telling me.
I got an email. Send it to you right now. Give me your email address.
Okay, I think you have it already. You've emailed me before.
Well, I don't have it. I want it again.
Okay, I'll get it to you.
And I'll give you the, the recordings, cause it's funny how Ed always says to everybody, are you recording? As soon as he calls from, he calls from his personal phone, because the township phone is recorded. I move, I ask this township to make sure that.
Township phones aren't recorded.
The fire department phones are supposed to be recorded. They're all recorded.
Phones are recorded, for sure.
And that's every phone in that depart, in that department. So moving forward, I ask this, this board to ask Ed, no more personal phone calls to people. You know, from his cellphone. He has something to do with work about the fire department. He needs a call from the fire department line. Because every time, every firefighter that he's ever called, three of them today, and the first thing they all told me, Ed asked if I was recording. And Ed says something about me.
Okay.
I had nothing to do with this department or this township for the last two years. And all of a suddenly, my name's getting brought up again by Ed.
Okay.
And nobody, and nobody can answer why. So what did Ed say to you today about me, Yusinkowski?
He just said that he had talked to you today?
No, he hung up the phone. I called, I called the township phone.
Well, I, I, I just told you what he said to me. He said he had talked to you today. He said that he had talked to the trustees today.
And that's illegal to go talk to trustees and tell them to stay away from me?
Well, I don't know what the conversation was, so.
I got a call from Ed today, and I got a text. It said, call me when you can. And then when I talked to him, the only thing he told me about was that he was withdrawing his, um, expenditure over five hundred things off of tonight's, um, agenda. Because he didn't get enough, um, estimates. He wasn't happy with the work. Yeah, he wasn't happy with the bids he got.
Is it, is, are those bids open to the public, or are they posted on the website?
Um, not exactly sure where he posts them, but there's, um, you know, he needs a new staircase.
Mm-hmm, and station two, and a, and a hundred fifty. It's, you know, those blue pressure tanks, if you got a well in your basement, he needs a new one of those.
And that's all he talked about.
Well, they're not, it's not posted to the fire department website. It's not posted to the Campbell Township website for those open bids.
But, but I will tell you what, your name didn't come up.
Okay. It came up, it came up in two other pe, two other trustees, and they called me and already talked to me about it. So. At the end of this meeting, Yusinkowski, I'd like your email address and your business card. I'll get you all that information over. I, I, hopefully that you will do your job as a supervisor and as a so-called CEO of this township that overlooks the fire department, everybody that's on it. It's your responsibility.
No, I understand that. I've done it several times before in the past for other issues, so it would not change in existence.
Well, here's the issue that we also have on the fire department. Why do we have sergeants and officers?
Are you a member of the fire department? How, how long has it been since you've been on the fire department?
Was that the meet?
Well, why are you commenting on the operation of the fire department?
Because everybody that's on that fire department knows that they say something, I'll fire them.
Well, we haven't fired anybody, so how is that the case?
Wanna watch Murphy get fired within the next month or so because I said something about him? Ed threatened him today, and Murphy called me right away. Ed, Ed called and threatened Murphy before this meeting, and Murphy called me.
I'm not, again, I am not gonna comment on anybody's discipline within the township.
So we have sergeants and lieutenants who don't have their officer license, that is required by state law. So if those sergeants and lieutenants are on a scene and a firefighter gets injured, it falls back on this township for the liability of every firefighter on that scene.
And you have access to those records, correct?
Uh, I've already talked to those people, and I have those within ten days, cause I FOIA them today too.
Okay.
So yes. So when I present all this information that you're saying the accusation.
But that wasn't in the FOIA.
Huh?
That wasn't in the FOIA. I saw the FOIA request, so.
Ranks is their, their stuff. And then all I have to do is go to the fire board in Lansing, type in their name, and it'll show all the classifications. It's underneath the smoke. You gotta have a smoke login. I can give you one if you want one. So when I, when I prove all this stuff by then, by next meeting, are you willing to step down and resign since all this is happening underneath your nose?
Well, this is the first accusation I've heard, so why would I step down? I asked you to provide me documentation and proof so that I can look into it. That's my responsibility. Right? And I would do that. I've done that before in other accusations that have happened within the township. That's not anything that, that's unusual.
Well, Ed, so, so when all this does come to light, if you don't step down, will you recommend?
Why would I step? I'm asking you, why would I step down?
Because this is your, this is your business. You're the CEO. I own two very successful companies.
I'm sure you do. Okay, uh, we need to move on, so if, if you want to.
Are you, are you sure I do? You're saying that like?
I'm sure you do, yeah.
Like it's a joke. I do.
I don't think it's a joke.
I own two very successful companies.
So technically, I think he's out of time.
I, well, well.
No, no, no. There's no time limit. Like he said, there's no time. He doesn't want the common one.
We do, we do ask, we do ask that you be respectful of the time.
No, there's no time limit.
It's actually, it's an administrative policy and procedure that is three minutes. We just don't enforce it.
You're supposed to have a clock too on the, on the counter too then, showing that I can see how much more time I have.
Sure.
You don't. See, this is, this is the issue. You wanna go one way.
I'm not, I didn't, I didn't ask for the three minutes. I'm just asking you to be respectful.
My respectfulness is why I know what the hell's going on in this township.
Okay.
And why is it happening underneath your nose and nobody's doing anything about it?
Well, you just brought it to light, so you haven't given us a chance to do anything about it if there was something.
Why did you not, why did you, why did you agree with Ed to suspend Dave Murphy on his own personal time?
I, once again, I am not gonna discuss someone else's discipline at any point in time to you. I will discuss it with that employee. That employee knows exactly why they were suspended, but I am not gonna discuss it with you.
So I go get an affidavit signed that I represent, that I can represent Dave Murphy. You're gonna discuss that with me?
You're gonna, sure.
You think this is all a joke, Rob?
I'll pass it by my lawyer and ask him if that's okay. That's fine with me.
Rob, Rob, I got something called F you money and I'm willing to go after everybody here.
I don't care about money, so, I mean, if, if that's, if that's what you wanna do and my lawyer approves of that, go right ahead. Do what you gotta do.
All right, I will, I'll get affidavit signed by Murphy. I got affidavit signed by the other firefighters, cause everybody's afraid to come to this township.
Okay.
And I got emails. I'll send you every single email I got from the body.
Okay. Look forward to it. All right, any other public comment?
I think that Mr. Campbell has an explanation.
So I just would like to state a couple of things. One, uh, my name is Tyler McGank. I'm from Port Huron Township. Um, so I, I find that oftentimes when you're respectful to somebody, they're more wanted to, to inform you of things and if you're rude to them or if you're, um, confrontational. If, if you just show some decorum and be nice about it, I think that's gonna be a more effective way to be informed as opposed to just confronting that person or yelling at them or screaming at them or trying to call them out. I've found oftentimes being respectful is better and, and is gonna help achieve your goals of, of getting the information you want as opposed to being confrontational about it. That's from my experience, what I tend to find. Um, that's the first thing I wanna comment. Second, I want to, I wanna comment is that, um, I look forward to the new park. I'm sure it's gonna look nice. I'm sure, I mean, this, this has been in planning, I'm sure for, for, for many months, I'm sure, if not years. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to the new park. I'm sure it's gonna be nice and, um, and yeah, a nice addition to the community, so.
Thank you, Tyler. I think Mr. Campbell, you were, you were gonna comment tonight?
I'm Ray Campbell. Live at two ninety-nine Eileen Avenue. Uh, I'm gonna raise my concerns under, uh, one of the, on new business. Uh, resolution twenty-five dash eleven has to do with expanding basically the water system, adding on to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I did some history and I shared it there. You have one. If you look back in the middle of that, uh, document, you'll see that in two thousand twenty-one, Tetra Tech came out and said that we have no more capacity in the system. Uh, then on Jul- in twenty-four, now we went to PCE. They came out and said that there's a study and there's problems with the system. Uh, we haven't heard back from that study or hasn't been any presentation. I know we allocated a lot of money to that, uh, project. But I, I think the public has the right to know what is the status of our water and sewage system is. What, you know, what is the overall status? Uh, and we need transparency. You know, we got a system here. If you look back at the minutes that I provided you, uh, and particularly Mr. Jackson, you, you know this history, you know, very well. So this has been ongoing, uh, I, I, it may be even before twenty-one. I just couldn't find, go any further back. So I'm concerned that we're extending it now with this, without actually having the public know. And I'm concerned because I spoke with the trustees and I sho- shared my history finding they weren't really familiar with the history. So they don't see the, if you take this one little, uh, resolution in, on its own, you could be slightly misled. I think in order for this to be properly viewed, I think we have to have some kind of report from, I'm gonna say, uh, John Monty saying, what is the status? What do we have here? Because if we commit here, then we could be exposing, uh, the taxpayers to a considerable amount of cost. So it's hard for me to look at this and say, you know, how can you rule on something when we know we have a known problem? It's probably complex. Uh, so, uh, and that's my concern. That's what I'm outlining here.
So after, can I go, uh, so after twenty-one, uh, we did several things with the sewer system, uh, after twenty-one, so, um, the first thing we did is we smoke tested.
Oh, yeah, there's all kinds of things.
Yeah, so smoke testing, you know, exposed a lot of, uh, weaknesses in systems, so a lot of people were doing things like pulling their sewer caps off in their yard, uh, letting that, and, and by the way, the, the sewer system works fine, uh, on a daily basis, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The problem is, I said, the, the sewer system works fine on a daily basis. Your problem is that during large-scale wet weather events, you have an infiltration of water, right? So we've done a lot of things to minimize that infiltration of water. Uh, since twenty-one, we've lifted sewer, uh, manhole covers in several areas that had sunk down or had, had dirt kinda come up and to the point where water was getting into the manhole cover, so we lifted those manhole covers. In several manholes, we wrapped the manhole, which is basically putting honestly just a wrap around it to, to prevent water from getting in. Um, we've, through the smoke testing, found several areas where people were, uh, plugging their, um, sump pumps into the sewer system, which they're not supposed to do. Um, again, sewer caps off, that sort of thing. So we fixed a lot of, a lot of those issues. Does that completely fix the entire thing? No. Uh, so before, and I know you're concerned about this particular project, we did talk to PCE and make sure that we had capacity for that particular project with the understanding that at some point in time, we have to fix it. So we have other projects that want to go that we've just told they, they can't. We just, until we get, uh, a, a, a solution, which we've already agreed to, by the way, so, um, we are gonna add a, you know, our, our intent is to add a, a forest main and move some sewer lift stations, um, off of Allen Road, so, um, but this, I mean, this, this particular resolution is kind of the back end of the process. Um, the allocation or allowing for that to move forward happened a long time ago, right? So we're, we're kind of, you know, we've told them it's good to build. We're gonna, you know, uh, have capacity for you to have water and sewer. Water's not an issue at all. Uh, the only issue we, we had prior to, and, and you may go back to two thousand eight or nine, um, is we do own a portion of the sewer plant in Port Huron. I don't know if you knew that, but so, I think it's seventeen percent, uh, if I'm not mistaken. So our capacity is limited to seventeen percent. So two thousand eight, nine, um, prior to that, we had thirteen different housing developments on the books where they had gone through the planning process and had sewer allocated to them, um, which is several hundred, close to a thousand, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, uh, taps, uh, that were allocated by people that had actually spent the money getting engineering done and came to the planning commission. Housing crisis happened, right? In two thousand eight, nine area. None of those projects happened, right? So there's a provision that we have to use to withdraw those, basically, and so we brought back those thousand, uh, allocated units. So we've had nowhere near a thousand allocated units, so capacity is, and, and allocation at the city is, is not an issue or even close to an issue at this point. In fact, I think if you look at the projects that have come through planning recently, I mean, we've got one down here at Griswold and Wadums and nothing's happened, right? So the, the process is now, he has to come back. If he doesn't, if he doesn't make any progress on his, his, uh, development after being approved by the planning commission for a year, he has to come back to the planning commission with a new site plan. And he's getting very close to that point, so, yeah, sewer is, sewer on Allen Road is definitely a concern. It's been addressed by this board already. We've already committed to, to fixing that. Um, and we're, we're not allowing anyone else in that area to develop, even though there are some that want to develop until that sewer, uh, is fixed. But this, we did go to PCE prior to approving to make sure that there was capacity for that, but that's because we had made so many corrections.
Okay, well, but just in twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, John Monty outlining a, kind of a grim picture of the system. And.
Well, he's telling us, we gotta, we gotta fix it, which we did.
Well, he's telling, you got a good, well, he said it's EPA problem. He said it's a health problem, so that's pretty significant.
Sure, yeah.
So in terms of transparency or information to public, why can't we have a report that says this is the system we have, good, bad, and ugly. It's this system. And it's all the dialogue that you, you say is, it's fine, but where is the?
So at this point, I mean, we're, so at this point, we've committed to PCE to, to fix the problem. So they're gonna, we're gonna put in a force main. The study that they're going to do is the study on how best to do that and then engineer that system and us move forward with it. That's the plan. To do a, to do a separate study at this point wouldn't make a whole lot of sense just to say the same thing over again, right? So at this point, he's gonna take a look at what is the best alternative for us to use to make that work. So what's gonna be the most cost-effective way? Um, cause there are some alternate routes. We had three, uh, you know, in his initial report, he gave us three options. By the way, they were, they were all discussed at a public meeting, so none of it's, none of it's be, you know, none of it's see, it's all out in the open. It has been for, for a long time, so. Um, but he gave us three options that he was looking at for where that force main, uh, could possibly go. So again, it's just a matter of finding what is the most cost-effective way to do that and the least impact to users. I mean, the, the, to me, the whole idea that you have water, the bad thing about water coming into, by the way, it happens everywhere. Water coming into a sewer system is that water then gets treated and you're paying for it to be treated. Right? So ideally, you're doing everything you can to minimize the amount of gra- groundwater that's getting into your system, uh, which is what we did. We, we spent a lot of time and money to address some of those concerns. Doesn't fix it all, but it, it definitely helped.
Okay, well, at the last, uh, planning commission meeting, I tried to see what is our capacity or our allocation map? Don't have one. Nobody knows. Can't get it. So if nobody knows, how, who's watching it? How do you know we have capacity if we don't have an output that we could look at that says this is our capacity?
Yeah, it's just, it's a calculated number of units is what it is. Um, basically, you assign a, a unit of measure to a household. It's, it's, it's kind of an imperfect, uh, but it gives you a pretty good idea of, of where you're at, so.
Well, you have to manage with some system. Some actually, why isn't that transparent? What is that system? Why can't we see it? Why isn't it published? Why don't we get it? We're not really getting a clear picture of, it's the cost element. It's the five million dollars.
Right.
That they were talking about that's, you know, this isn't a, a few dollars.
Right.
Yeah, and then how is that gonna be funded? And so there's a lot of.
Yeah, we've already done a lot as far as the funding piece of that goes and how, um, cause you don't, you don't special assess on, on a, on that, right? So, uh, if it's new construction and new users, you special assess and the users that benefit from that, uh, pay that cost. In this case, uh, you don't have new users. Um, you, it's an expenditure from within the system, so you have to have a rate structure that supports that. So, um, you know, we've looked at how we're going to fund that, what its impact on rates are. We've, I mean, you were here when we talked about that in the meeting, so uh, we've talked about that in, in meetings here, um, and that, that's no different. Um, we're using some pretty good software now, uh, called Waterworth that allows us to put in, uh, a lot of details, including our entire asset management plan uh, as far as what needs, what replacement cycle you're on. We've got every single piece of pipe in that software and what its estimated lifespan is, when it would be replaced, and what those dollars look like, all the way out to forty years. So we have a pretty good understanding of between now and forty years, what our expenditures are gonna be, what the rate structure needs to be. As various things change, we can modify that. Obviously, uh, Eagle, uh, continues to add additional requirements to, uh, water and sewer systems and understandably so. Um, I think we all want, uh, good water and, and safe sanitary sewer, you know, so, um, but Eagle is, is added a bunch of criteria to, uh, to that, so there's additional cost to meeting those criteria, you know, so you have to budget for all that.
So is that information available that the public can look at?
I can, uh, I can print you off a copy of the Waterworth stuff if you want.
Well, I'm interested in what, what our current allocation is, cause nobody in the planning commission knows.
Sure, yeah, we can get that for you.
Now, and like I said, if you look back, I only could go back to twenty-one, but this subject kept repeating itself. From twenty-one, came back up again in twenty-two with the same budget, so it's been leapfrogging now for many years.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, again, it's not that we're not doing anything. We've been doing things to minimize the amount of water that gets into the sewer system. And for two reasons. Again, number one, because of capacity, which you're talking about, and number two, because now you're, you're, the residents are having to pay for water to be treated that doesn't have to be, right? So that infiltration of water, yeah, I mean, it's a battle that every, every, every municipality faces. And so we're, we're trying to find ways to minimize that all the time. I mean, it's an ongoing thing where we're trying to minimize that uh, because we don't want residents to have to pay for that to be treated.
No, that's, I understand.
Does that help? Does that help? Some?
Well, like I said, it, when I attend the planning commission meeting, they don't, and they're looking at plans and nobody knows where we are. And when you go back to old minutes, they actually had a map and there was people who monitored and, uh, and we, all that's evaporated. So they had a system at one time, uh, I think, I, I can't tell you when I went back. It was quite a ways back. Made sense to me. Now we don't have anything. Nobody seems to know, so it's kinda like it's a void. Uh, and I can't see why it's changed. It should be, and we're, you know, the problem keeps repeating itself in the minutes. And we're now, I'm not sure where we are now, but again, we just went through it in, uh, twenty twenty-four. And we haven't seen any results or surveys or stats.
Yeah, I would say we probably have capacity for another eight hundred. Uh, when we talk about City Port Huron, probably another eight hundred residential connections.
Again, everybody's got a guess. I, I'm happy.
Somewhere in that area.
It, it should be documented, right? And you're saying it is.
Correct.
And you, you'll, you'll be able to get that for me?
I'll get that for you, yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm not sure where he's talking about. I'm assuming it's my neck of the woods over on Allen?
Yes, it is.
Um, yeah, it's, uh, north of you, up by the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I, I use you guys, most of the boards of where I've been over here and we've been around this mountain many, many times. What is the resolution over there? I kinda got away from this. I was there during the smoke screen. And there was high, uh, high risers put on, cause water was getting in, groundwater. Then we went through the whole, people throwing mop heads in the sewer.
Yep.
I've been through this meeting, seen so many motors purchased because they were getting ginked up. You know, the substations and I mean, it's just never ending. So that's been on there. Uh, last I knew, Tetra Tech, I believe it was, was thirty-seven thousand dollars. We contracted them to survey the problem. They came back with something that wasn't suitable per up to your guys' standards, the board at that time. You re-contracted it out. Um, last I heard, the last contractor, whoever it was, was another criminal, one, one he spent. Uh, with that being said, um, to my understanding, they were thinking about either shooting it to Range Road and to Poeyorn or along the expressway. Um, after he started talking, that kinda rung it back to me, but, uh, is that a resolution that I had missed? Where are we at on that?
Yeah, we did, we did talk to the, uh, to Port Huron Township about connecting into their system. That was not possible. They didn't have the capacity there to do it. Um, so the, the, there's three. One is to run it along the freeway. Uh, one is to run it along the current, uh, gravity fed sewer, and I can't remember what the third one was off the top of my head, but. Yeah.
Yes, they actually rode to Range.
Or run it straight up, uh, range.
So this, is there actually a target here now or is this just still being bounced around? So what's the target here?
No, uh, PCE's already working on that. We've already agreed to that, yeah. No, uh, PCE is already working on that. We've already agreed to that. Yeah.
So you don't have a route? They're just, uh?
No, they're gonna make the determination on the route that's most cost effective. So.
When do you anticipate this coming in?
Hmm, I'm gonna say it's probably gonna be three or four months, maybe.
Would that explain all the surveying and people trapesing around my property over there the last couple of months?
Uh, that would not be, uh, that would be, uh, probably, um, so I, I think if I'm not mistaken, Jowitz maybe selling their property.
I went right to him. First, the surveyor guy, it took me two days to track him down, cause he cut up over through the field and this fat old guy made it about a mile and a half through that snow. And then I had to turn around, but, uh, I confronted Jow, cause he's usually pretty much the one in the loop and he's, you know, he's answered to develop. And, uh, so the survey guy, he was a little skittish, but he, uh, he informed me, which was quite interesting, which brought me back to these meetings, is the EDA had been over there again poking their nose. And we went around that mountain before, if you remember correctly, Rob.
Right.
So that.
Well, the EDA has told me that they will not spend money in our township.
Well, I don't know who, I was told the county and I'm glad to see, um, what's your name again, sir?
Robert.
Robert, I, I campaigned for you. I'm glad to see fresh face here. It's nice to see you out coming to the meetings and I got my eyes on you, cause I really pulled for you to get in here. So, um, that being said, and I sent you an email about the EDA, so you received it. Um, so, um, so I figured it was the EDA coming back into play, you know, cause they're sneaky like that. So, but with this water thing, I didn't know if it was the water department, you know, if you guys were trying to cut down through the woods to drain that water off or what, after that gentleman started talking, I forgot all about it actually. So, um.
Uh, no, we haven't been out there at all.
Okay. And, uh, and like I said, it's good to see you here. I'll actually direct a question to you, seeing that you're here tonight. Are we still taking Canadian trash out to the landfill there in Smith Creek?
Officially, we are not. A measure passed by Commissioner Semasko in December of two thousand twenty three and Canadian trash. However, I have heard rumors that there's some processing going on that may be trying to bypass that. I'm investigating that right now. Officially, county's policy is there is no Canadian trash allowed in our land.
So.
So with that.
I gotta, we gotta clarify that just a little bit, right? So under the, under the Establishment Clause of the U.S. Constitution, we can't deny Canadian trash, right? However, what was happening before is that they were signing contracts with, uh, the haulers to bring them in at a reduced rate. So that is, that is in it. So they could still, I, I doubt that they would, but they could still bring in the trash. They would just have to pay the standard rate. But they're gonna go down somewhere else, probably Lennox Township. Yeah, for less.
With that being said too, a lot of that water over my area was going to that, what is that, Leachman's Pond or what do they call it over there at the airport? So wouldn't that reduce a lot of the water in my area just with the lost Canadian trash being filtered at that landfill?
The leachate is more a function of the rain and snow melt.
Do you mind coming up here and giving a little?
Part of.
Do you want to speak to Mike?
No, that's okay. I'm sure everybody can hear me. I'm usually pretty loud. Uh, the leachate is normally more from the rain and the snow melt off. The trash does of course contribute, but the, the extra volume of trash from Canadian trash, that's not gonna make a substantial difference in the leachate flow. And I've confirmed that by the records.
Okay. All right. And I'll ask you straight up, any intention of getting back in bed with the EDA?
No, we actually, uh, we, we actually talked about that already and we, we have decided not to. So, yeah, yeah.
Well, there's just been a lot of question, not just myself, but there's.
Yeah, I mean, our, our thing is Dennis, is that we, when we get a membership or some kind of, you know, working relationship, relationship with an organization, we want something somewhat defined in return, right? And the EDA can't give us anything. I mean, we asked for some things the last time we were members and we didn't get them.
We gave over a hundred thousand dollars and we got nothing out of them the time you joined. And how did that work?
Oh, it wasn't a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, so much per citizen, don't they go there?
Yeah, I think it's fif- I think it's fifty cents per resident, something like that.
And I know you are gonna submit a question too, to the county commissioners as far as how that works and were the EDA getting?
I did, yeah. That went to Steve Semasko.
And did you get an answer on that?
No, he's, uh, we, we have a meeting on the twenty seventh, I believe it is. And he's gonna answer all those.
You were wondering if we were blanketed, blanketed underneath the county, right?
Right. I, no, my, my question was, um, we've been told that because we're not a member of the EDA, the EDA will not spend money in our township. Um, so my question was, the county, uh, was spending three hundred thousand dollars of, of, which is our taxpayer money, uh, for a membership with the EDA, uh, would that money be used in Kimball Township? And why wouldn't it be? I mean, it's our taxpayers, right? So I don't think the EDA should be coming around telling us that they're not gonna spend any money in our township when.
You know how I feel about the EDA.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just telling you, that was kind of our question, so.
Okay. And just to clarify earlier, I'm not totally opposed to park. He, just anybody on the board knows me, things have to make sense.
Sure.
Before I'm on board with anything. And just the numbers I was seeing and hearing, it just wasn't adding up. And I just ask you guys to do a lot of research and make sure that
Sure.
this is gonna be feasible before you make any decisions. And once again, I hope you come, give us a spiel once in a while and keep us up to date too.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, going on to, uh, SEMCOG. So we met with SEMCOG, uh, myself and Clerk Ruble a couple of weeks ago, um, had a really good meeting. There were a couple of things on there that I thought were um, services that we definitely should use. Um, one of them is that they are doing uh, free videos of municipalities. It's kinda like a promotional video. Um, you can go to the SEMCOG website and see those. I think I may have given information in the packet. Um, the only one in St. Clair County that's done it is City Report here on, uh, but they're, they're pretty nice videos. Um, it's something we can use on our social media, website, wherever we wanna use it. Doesn't cost us anything. Um, and then the other one was Pacer AI. Um, so we have used, uh, with the county fair, we've used Pacer AI. Kind of identify where your, where your attendees are coming from, how many attendees you have. Um, and I think that would be really good for us to use for, for parks, get a, a better understanding or a deeper understanding of where people are coming from, uh, what the attendance is like, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, again, that's at no cost to us, cause, uh, SEMCOG has the, the membership for that. So I think it'd be worth our time to, uh, do both of those things. So I encourage you to take a look at those and uh, see if you agree with that when you have some time. Comments or questions on that? All right, then we have, uh, Resolution twenty five dash eleven. This is the final step in the, uh, special assessment process. Um, so it's a, a bond resolution. So basically this authorizes us to, uh, move forward with the bonds. Uh, the project is moving along fairly well already. Um, if you drive across there from Myers, you can see that, uh, they're making some, some good progress on that. So, um, they're hoping to, to be open, uh, sometime this year, uh, towards the end of summer, I think. Um, so they've got already people signed up, ready to go to get in there. So a little bit early for that, I think, but, um, I guess there's a need for it. So, uh, so this resolution would just authorize the, the bond resolution. Again, uh, this would be something that the property owners would be, uh, would be paying for, uh, through special assessment.
Just the one.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any questions on Resolution twenty three, or twenty five dash eleven? All right.
My understanding is of the whole thing is that they, if somebody wanted to hook in, their deal would be with their special assessment would be with, uh, the Memorial Home or the.
Yeah, we, uh, the, the attorney's gonna draft up an agreement for that, but yeah, someone would have to pay a benefit fee to tap into that.
If they, if they ever bought the homeowners out down, is that still called grass it? The little?
Uh, it's actually Isabelle, but yeah.
Okay. So if they were to, like Culvers, if Culvers did decide to come back, then, then their deal would be with, uh,
Correct.
with the.
All right. Uh, any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty five dash eleven.
All right. Do we have support for that?
I'll support.
All right, we have support. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Usikowski?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
And Locars?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Any other audience participation? All right, we should entertain a motion to close both of the public hearings then.
I'll make the motion that we close both of the, um, open public hearings.
Public hearings, all right. Motion by trustee Deland. Do we have support for that?
I'll support.
Supported by Treasurer Jackson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none. All right, uh, officers reports. Um, the only thing I've got is I'm meeting with, uh, our new commissioner tomorrow, so looking forward to that. Um, it's got a lot going on, so I appreciate you taking the time, really do. So, uh, it'll be good to, uh, sit down with, uh, a county commissioner. Um, every now and then I get to talk to Joy, um, and, uh, but rarely ever sat down and talked with other county commissioners. So I'm glad we have the, of course, I ran into him a lot in different places for different meetings, so, but I appreciate you doing that. I really do. Um, so that's tomorrow. Then I also am meeting with, uh, City Report here on, uh, Kim Harmer does most of their grant writing there. And she has reviewed our, uh, grant submission for the, um, for the trust fund grant. Um, she's got some recommendations for us, so we'll, uh, take a look at those and see what she has. That's all I've got tonight. Treasurer Jackson.
Well, as, as of, uh, February twenty eighth, tax season closed for twenty twenty four. We collected ninety three point two percent of the taxes owed. And the county will reimburse what our share is as far as that goes. So I'm just gonna throw some figures at you here. Quickly, township operating, let you know, eleven million, two hundred four thousand, eight hundred eighty six dollars and ten cents was to be collected in Kimball Township for summer and winter. Kimball Township's only gonna get two hundred fifty three thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty eight cents. That's all we get out of all that, those funds. Now, that isn't completely true, because we have a fire millage now that's gonna give us another five hundred and nine thousand dollars and forty nine cents. Yes, it helps with the fire, but it also creates money that we used to put into the fire in the general fund to fix roads and things like that, just so you, you know where we're going with these figures. Uh, the link but water and sewer bills, uh, we have twenty five thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars and forty four cents that we will get. Have we've already collected nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty forty five. When I give you these figures, anything the difference, the county will pay us. Cause they're gonna collect the tax bills as of March first. And they pay us for whatever's left owing in the township. Uh, streetlight fees, we collected seventy thousand, one hundred forty eight dollars and fifty eight cents. They will make up the difference from seventy five thousand, forty nine dollars and eighteen cents. On the fires administration fee, that's for me, all my clerks have done a tremendous job this past, the season, very few errors. Uh, we get a hundred nine thousand, one hundred ninety nine dollars and eighty five cents. That is used primarily to help over the cost of the assessing department within the township. Right now, we've collected a hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty cents. The county will make up the difference in that refund check that comes about May. Other than that, uh, we've got, there's many other figures that deal with that, but those are ones that, that directly related to the township on that. Bank accounts, cash distribution, which is what we mostly pay things out of, uh, that we are in need of. Two million, one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred ninety four dollars and seventy nine cents. The tax account right now, which will be down to a zero eventually, is at one million, five hundred four thousand, nine hundred forty five dollars and twenty seven cents. Trust and agency fund, payroll fund, uh, performance bonds, what's, somebody's got a project going, they have to pay X amount of dollars. If they don't complete that deposit, we keep the money. But otherwise, we have to pay it back to them. And the utility account, the water and sewer funds is at nine hundred sixty eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and one cent. For a total of four million, six hundred thirty nine thousand, forty dollars and fifty eight cents. We have five CDs or money market funds out there, which would bring that total up to five million, seven hundred ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Everybody's got any questions on any of those figures, uh, you can ask those right now, so. That's about all I've got for tonight.
Trustee Locars?
I've got a few things. Um, everybody sees the ditches are starting to fill with water and people's yards are getting full. I've been told, and to my understanding, when someone buys a home in low setting areas, the township gives them that allowance under the terms that the Drain Commissioner, the county road, you know, the county road commission's going to dredge their ditches so their yards don't flood. A lot of the yards I see, they don't have much ditch. So, I mean, everything's just ending up in their front yard and then I'm sure it's ending up in their crawl space of their basement. I'm not sure. So what, what can we do to remedy a lot of properties that have just kinda went on the wayside and not had their ditches addressed? Can we reach out to Robert Wiley or who's?
Well, you're talking about two totally separate things. So, uh, Drain Commission and Road Commission, two entirely separate issues, right? So then the Drain Commission has established drains that they maintain.
Sure.
Um, some of those do help, uh, with water in yards. Um, the, the road ditches primarily are for the road, right? Their, their purpose is to keep water off the road. So when we prioritize ditching work, we typically prioritize it where there's water over the road. So last year, we did one where there was three spots where it just, it literally would just run right over the road. So, um, that's primarily what we do. We do other ones too, but, um, their main purpose isn't to drain, uh, water off a property, although they do, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's, we got a friend who lives on the corner of Ravenswood and Richmond and his yard is just, and he's been told that it's the county's responsibility to dredge his ditches.
They do. So when we.
Cause he can't touch the ditch. I mean.
No, we can't touch the ditch either. So, um, when a, so that's in the road easement. So, um, we've had people, you know, go out with a backhoe, cause they have the equipment and they just start working on their ditch, right? Um, county will come right down and tell you, you can't do that. If the township were to go out there with a backhoe, cause we have a backhoe, county would tell us the same thing. You can't do that. That's not your property. So when we do have ditching problems, uh, what I do is I contact the road commission. I tell them, hey, here's a, an address you need to look at. Um, they're having problems with water in the ditches. Um, and then I'll ask for a work order from the, from the county.
So basically residents should just reach out to you or?
Reach out. I've got a list going already for this year of, of ditching issues that need to be addressed.
Also, I was sitting down with a builder and he, uh, we were talking about development and stuff and he said that how when he had a developer, like, let's say he's just trying to be a developer, he's a builder, he's gotta pay for sewer and water to be installed. And then once he goes to connect, he's gotta pay additional.
Okay.
And I was just kinda bewildered. It almost seems, it seems predatory to the point where, why should he have to pay twice? I mean, he's doing us a favor by developing in our town. We're doing him a disfavor by charging him twice. Is that an ordinance or how is that?
It is by ordinance. Um, and we have to inspect and do other things to make, any, anytime that we have a connection into that system, because that system, regardless of whether the developer puts it in or we have a, someone put it in, that line becomes ours and it's our responsibility. So, um, there are, there are fees to tap in. I can look at that, cause I'm not sure.
He told me some crazy, I mean, he told me one time it was like to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars. And that's just.
For, well, tap-ins vary. You go to the, uh, ordinance, uh, for water and sewer, tap-ins vary by size.
Okay.
So the larger the capacity of the, and that's typical. Uh, so the larger the capacity of the line being hooked into the sewer or water, um, the more, the more it costs.
Sure. And the third thing I had, when I did MTA training a few months ago, one thing that was, uh, discussed, and mind you, all of MTAs run by lawyers. They were very specific about any discussion that is done about township business is to be done in this room. So since I've been on the board, I get weekly, whenever it's time to come to a meeting, I get a call from a certain person with the township. And so finally I just, you know what? I'm not going to be doing that. So I, I got an email set up. It's not through. I'm not going to be doing that, so I I got an email set up. It's not through the township, but I mean, it's very obvious that's what it's for. So I just wanted to bring that up. It's about transparency and, you know, whatever is discussed, it's gonna be documented.
So, you you know, like this board here, um Connie emails out an agenda.
Sure.
So if you haven't noticed, we send it out blind copy. And the reason is if you respond to that and it goes to everybody, then it, it it's classified as discussion.
Sure.
Right, so we send it out blind copy. If by chance you do respond to it, then it's not part of discussion, right? So um now, that's, that's the board, because we make the, make the decisions, so our discussion should happen in in public. And our decision-making should happen in public. There's a couple of exceptions to that, um that we can go into a closed session for. The union negotiations is one, property purchase is another, and and employee discipline is another, so. Uh but all of our discussions should happen here in pu- in public.
Sure, that's all I got.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Sure.
Um about this water deal that we're, we're experiencing on our road.
Okay.
Howard Road.
Mm-hmm.
Ever since. The county or the township put uh sewers in, she has no ditch, so they're the ones that screwed her ditch. Our ditches on our road. And she's got water three quarters of the way up to her house. I mean, it is ridiculous.
Yes, let me see, I got, I got one from forty-nine thirty-six, Howard.
That's it?
Yep, so.
I'm the one that did the video, I'm her neighbor.
Okay, alright, I didn't see a video, but.
Would you like to see the video?
That's okay, I, I, we're gonna go out there with a a road commission guy uh this week, so we'll take a look at it.
I mean, it's, it's what, driveway's washing out there over.
Just uh, just east of Allen Road, right?
What's that?
Just east of Allen, right?
Is that water running?
Yeah, it's running down into the ditch.
It's going.
The ditch isn't full.
It's going over the culvert, starting to go into the culvert.
The ditch isn't full, but it's spreading from our yard, yeah. Yeah, we'll come out there and take a look at it.
It's just ridiculous.
Isn't it the, well, I've been told that the culvert that is plugged is actually the residence.
It is, and the, and the.
It is, but when they put the sewer in, they filled their ditch in, just like you.
The ditch is higher than the culvert?
Yeah, because I was surprised when they just ditched um Anglewood. We had all the residents come and say, once they ditched them, their culverts were higher or lower than the ditch and they were flooding and they were told they had to put in their own culverts.
Culvert or above it?
Yeah, so the the county road commission has an uh. I guess a sectionary unit or whatever that enforces uh, to your question, enforces uh the culvert. Uh thing, basically you send a a notice to the property owner that they have to fix their culvert.
This problem's been going on for years.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a long time.
Yeah, we'll get out there and take a look at it for you, okay?
And Mary, what are you guys doing over in Allen Road, raising that overpass?
Uh yes.
Uh yeah, that, that's not us, that's uh MDOT doing that.
That's doing.
How are we supposed to get an hour of emergency when the train's blocking Allen Road three quarters of the time?
Yeah, we, we've talked to the road commission and we've talked to uh, the road commission has reached out to MDOT, so I'm not sure what the resolution on that is yet. But uh they sent a pretty firm uh letter to MDOT saying that we had, and I counted the number of residents, I think it was forty people or forty houses that would be impacted by that particular project, so.
Yeah, we could run to the store and come back and I can't wait for an hour and a half or two hours because of the train, sometimes four.
Yes. So we, we are aware of that and uh that that is being addressed. I'll follow up with that again tomorrow.
Uh my neighbor couldn't come, but he lives on the end of Howard Road, it's a culset going around. And he's noticed people have been dumping garbage, and so should he take a picture? Show you or these people are dumping garbage?
Just call us, just call us and let us know.
Call you?
Yeah. We had someone drop uh pretty much a whole kitchen over on Ravenswood.
That was crazy.
A whole kitchen?
Box.
Sheriff's, Sheriff's Department came out on that, where they were able to identify who it was, so.
On the Allen Road, they're gonna pick up the overpass, are we stationing a tire truck? Well, north of on uh Tri-Os.
Uh we've talked about that, yeah, I'm pretty sure we're gonna do something uh related to that.
Yeah, somebody has a heart attack on our road, they might as well just take a nap.
Well, hopefully they don't, right? Regardless.
That's ridiculous.
Alright, trustee Locars, you're taking up a lot of time here. You got anything else there?
That's it.
Alright, trustee Deland?
On, on your ditching list, have you been out on Dove, or on Maple Road when Mr. Danden was?
I have it, yeah.
So you might want to put that on your list? And I was gonna ask if you had an update on our, our grant for the landfill, but.
Well, yeah, I did. I talked to Anthony Theodoro, um he has talked to uh Matt Williams. He said that grant will still work, they still would need that. Um but we haven't heard whether it's being funded. There's still just so much uh uncertainty out there, kind of like you mentioned with uh cancer funding and. Uh there's just a whole lot of uncertainty at this point with all the executive orders and what their impact is and how they're working and.
Yeah, but we're missing them right now, you know.
Yeah, we are missing them. We, we gotta get home and find out what's going on.
We gotta get home and see. Oh, I thought it was at eight, okay.
Okay, so we got a little bit of time.
I got time. Um so. So if there's not gonna be funded, what happens to our forty-nine thousand? Are we just out?
We're just out.
We're just out that money?
Yeah.
Okay.
John Danden, I turned that into the inspector for county, that's not Clint Thompson, but there's a guy they have that goes out.
Yeah, somebody's planting flowers. He come in a couple of times and he said he wasn't coming back.
While we're on drainage, I'll just throw a couple of figures out at you. You pay a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, you people that are on those drains, the flows of the drains, a year. And then we pay sixty-six thousand dollar fee at large here in the township, so. I just submitted for that check today, sixty-six thousand to pay the drain commission.
They, they just left, but it, that's on the side, the same side, like where the park is, that forty-nine hundred block.
It's on the other side of uh, other side of Allen, on the north side of the road.
It's on the other. It's on the other side. Okay, because there's some kind of a weird drain that cuts through there, like from back by the park, isn't there, that feeds into the ditch too?
Yeah, I think there is, yeah.
So where does that water go? That's not part of that. I can't remember what the name of that drain was. It came from Castlewood and all that. That was over Moore.
Yeah, I'm not sure which drain it is there, yeah. That was, yeah, that was.
On Range Road, I think.
Stocks Creek.
Stocks Creek, yeah, that's not part of that or anything.
No.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's the most expensive one.
Right, yeah.
Alright, trustee Bowen?
Uh while we're talking about ditches, I just wanted to know, we're pretty flooded too. We don't have a ditch. And I know that the road commission did one from a neighbor across the road to Roger Hurd at some point since I've lived there. But we're not draining there to get it across the road.
Okay.
So.
Well, most of the places, the ditches are full of snow and the water can't go anywhere anyway.
Well, that is part of the problem. The grounds, the ground's frozen, so the water doesn't have any place to go.
Yeah, I don't have a ditch. We actually, we just went ice skating on Sunday out on our lakefront, so. It's pretty bad.
Alright, anything else?
No.
Alright, uh do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
I'll support. Nobody else support?
Trustee Deland got it there.
She got it.
All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned.
Just look at my lakefront. We went skating on Sunday. The boys were out there skating. It's bad.
I proposed it on.
There's quite a.
I did not see his message until later.
Not this one, but.
Hey Karen, when you get a chance, give me a call. I was at one oh six. The only other time I.
There's so many this week, I can't find anything.
See, it's always when you get a call, when you get a minute. But I mean, any, these are all just back in August.
From page ninety.
Oh, well, usually the only time he gets a phone call.